There was another note, Warren Messner, our board president, could not be with us this evening, so I am presiding over the meeting in his place. I'd like to have a motion to reopen the public meeting.
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we can open the public meeting now and we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have a presentation to start the meeting. We will go right into the president's report and Christine can give you a little bit of that, that our calendar got switched around. Just a couple of items for the president's report. This past Monday, we had an audit committee meeting with our internal and external auditors, and the results will be presented to the full board and the community at the next Board of Education meeting on October 11th. The short story is we're in very good financial health, and you will get the details on October 11th. We also received, and Warren wanted me to convey, that we received a letter and a petition from a community member regarding air conditioning installation in our buildings. Warren has spoken to that individual, and the Board of Ed and Administration will be reviewing this and reporting back on that at a later date. Christine will be discussing, I know in the superintendent's report about the Greeley Open Houses that have gone on. We have remaining Greeley tomorrow night, and Bell, and Seven Bridges 78 on October 4th. They've been extremely successful, and we're just very thankful that the community's had an opportunity to see our new faces and spaces. The global learning centers are looking really beautiful at the elementary schools, and we want to thank everyone, the administration, our head of facilities, Joe Gromando, John Chow, everyone that's been working tremendously, our custodians, to get these buildings up and running. There's just punch lists in a couple of schools. We appreciate everyone's patience, the faculty, the students, everyone at Greeley, while we really seek to make great improvements here. And please know that the administration is working tirelessly to make sure that everything goes as smoothly and as quickly as possible for everyone. I also just wanted to mention some upcoming events. This weekend, the Chappaqua Children's Book Festival with over 90 authors and illustrators will be at Bell from 10 to 4:00. I know someone wants to address that in public comment later, we'll leave that shortly. And this really is a nice event, fun for the whole family. I think over 90 authors and illustrators will be there, and simultaneously with that is the Great Chappaqua Bake Sale, which is to benefit Share Our Strengths No Kid Hungry Campaign. And over the last, I think, five years that they have had that bake sale, they've raised over $150,000 for that charity, which is terrific. And then also on Tuesday, October 2nd, the Horace Greeley Scholarship Fund will be hosting a Sparkle for Cause event, which is at Crabtree Kittle House. That's from 6:00 to 9:00, and you may be familiar with the Kittle House, which sponsors a different charity every Tuesday night. So if you have a lovely dinner there and see some community members, know that 30% of the proceeds will go to the Horace Greeley Scholarship Fund, and that goes to providing college scholarships to our Greeley grads. So that's, I think, all I have for that, and I can turn it over to Christine.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I just have a few comments before we go into the actual part of our meeting. So first, I have a new presentation calendar for your consideration. I laid it out on your spaces. As you may know from our last meeting, we're unable to present our assessment update tonight, which is typically at the second meeting in September, because there's been a delay from the New York State Education Department in releasing our 3-38 scores to the public. So hopefully, we'll be able to share this data on October 11th with you. And then I had met with the principals, and we had discussed for our presentations this year, instead of having them led by the administrators and the faculty, we'd actually ask the students to come and lead the presentations for you from each building. So we're hoping that that is acceptable, and we also made an adjustment based on your feedback to the May meeting, where we pushed it ahead a week so that we'd be in compliance with the voting calendar. So the budget hearing would be in May, at the same time as the board meeting. And I also added our board retreat on the calendar, or if I haven't done that, I need to do that. I thought I did that. I need to do that. So what I'd like you to do is look over this, and then perhaps we could put it on the agenda for the October 11th meeting for approval. So if you have any suggestions, maybe you can share those with Lisa prior to the meeting. Okay, so on our October 11th meeting, in addition to doing our assessment reporting and our audit report, we also will have our welcome for our new staff, where they'll come and meet you at 7:00 and talk a little bit about their first month here in our district. So I hope that's all right, too. That was a really nice event for us last year, right?
October 11th.
So, October 11th at 7:00, and that's not outside of the meeting, and it's in the lobby. Anyone is welcome to join us. So we have a few important speakers this month that I'd like to mention. The first, you probably have noticed, I've received them in my mailboxes at home and emails from the PTA. They're sponsoring the author of Empathy. He'll be here on Monday at 7:00 at Seven Bridges, presenting to anyone in our community that would like to go and hear from Dr. Borba on her work on developing empathy in students. And we are privileged that the PTA has offered for our fellowship, or SCL fellowship, and our administrators to meet with her beforehand to do some book study prior to her larger presentation to the community. So we're really excited for that. I hope a lot of parents and community members at large join us for that event. Also, for our first superintendent's conference day in October, we're focusing on curriculum alignment. That's another one of our strategic planning initiatives. And we have Westchester native and international speaker and Professor Heidi Hayes Jacobs, who's coming to talk to our entire faculty. And the board is, of course, welcome to join us, and our administrative team has been able to participate in her book studies. And what she has been, she's very well-known in the educational field, and a lot of her work lately has been in innovation and innovative spaces and developing global learners. So we're really excited to have her come to district. Our administrative team has begun to speak to the foundation about possibly sponsoring space in our district to test out our technology and other innovative products for faculty and students prior to purchasing them on a larger scale. So that's some of our work that we're doing or talking about in discussion with the Chappaqua Schools Foundation, we're really excited about. Thank you, Jane, for mentioning those two big events. I'd also like to just share, we have our signups now going on for the Spelling Bee. That's going to take place on November 5th. So if you have a team, middle school, high school, and then, of course, community, you're welcome to access that online, and you'll see a lot of advertisements about that in the future. And then the final thing I'd just like to share is we're hopeful on October 11th, we'll have an assistant principal candidate for your consideration, as well for the middle school.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is committee reports. Does anyone have anything to report from this week? I know I said the audit committee met, but there will be a full report on that at the next board meeting.
Do you want us to give the facilities now, or wait until 6.1?
I think that we decided that the facilities report belongs in the committee reports, and this facilities was for acknowledgement of change.
Yes. So do the facilities report here, then? That's fine.
Okay. The facilities report, there's two reports we'd like to give. Actually, I'm going to start with the second one first, meaning that the facilities has been, we had a long meeting to go over the capital projects. Go over them. The short of it is, they're all under budget, not all of them are on time at this moment. The facilities committee is going to meet, and we're going to give a full report, which we will post on the website, to give everybody an update on the individual projects and where they stand. So we're not going to, that's the second report for us, is that we're not going to give that report. The other report is the internal projects. We did this summer and every summer, Joe Gromando and his staff, while everybody's out doing whatever you do in the summer, are working hard, getting the buildings independent of the bond projects, but getting the buildings in shape and prepared for the following school year. And we have a list, which, in the interest of not having to hear me talk for too long, I'll summarize. At Greeley, we did 14 projects this summer, but so many important ones I will mention. All the electronic locks, all the locks were changed to electronic locks, as per the recommendations of the security committee, the short-term security committee that we had. Lot of furniture was changed, et cetera, painted the classrooms. At Bell, on the new fitness center, just to give you, it's, the majority of your work will begin in November for that. At Bell, there were six projects, which is actually a very large number, considering the mess at Bell over the summer with the beginning of the bond projects. But they were basic projects, painting classrooms, repairing gym floors, fence for the courtyard. At Seven Bridges, there were four major projects. Also, just things we do every summer, painting and fixing radios and the rock wall, et cetera. At Douglas Grafflin, also, there were four projects that were completed. Paving the parking lot was a major one. Landscaping, first grade furniture was all upgraded and changed. At both Roaring Brook and West Orchard, we did screens, which is ongoing, and the blinds, we completed it. At West Orchard, there were six projects, also mostly just furniture and painting and casework. Then in all the schools, which is, most of it's ongoing, and it's always going to be ongoing. We rewired for the generators, we're changing all the classroom locks to the new ones that can be controlled, especially for lockdown situations. And then we have no one who's accessing each room, et cetera. Those are all ongoing. In fact, there's a couple of guys out there tonight who are changing some of the locks here. And that's really it. I mean, I just, Holly and I met, and one of the things that we want to do is thank Joe and his staff for the outstanding work they did this summer and every summer. It's sort of a thankless job, and that nobody, you know, it's one of those things that you don't really notice until it's not done, or until it's not a thing. And they've done it, so you don't really notice it. Holly and I especially want to thank, and on behalf of the board, want to thank Joe and his staff for another successful summer, and thank them very much.
They do an amazing job. Any other committee reports?
Nothing from policy today.
Okay.
We talked, yeah, we have talked about that before.
Just, we're continuing our work with communications. We had an initial meeting, which I know we spoke of at the last meeting. We are continuing work to define our new logo. That will be used on all communications and publications that we do, and so we're streamlining that, and we think everyone's going to be really happy with it, but we're still tinkering a little bit.
We're hoping to have it for the October 11th meeting.
That would be great. So we're looking to do that for October 11th. Yep. Okay, we will move along to the public comment period. As everyone knows, we welcome public comments, to be respectful of each other's time. We limit them to three minutes. I know we have some people here who would like to comment this evening, so please step up to the microphone. I believe we have a special guest coming in, so we'll give you a second.
He can't speak, so I'll speak.
Okay. And state your name, thank you.
I'm Dawn Greenberg, and I'm here with Madeline Feinsmith, and we run the Children's Book Festival. And we're as surprised as you all are that we're in our sixth year, and we're both exhausted, but we're both very excited. We have 97 authors, actually.
Wow.
And we've been advertising all over New York City, Connecticut, Brooklyn, you name it. We're really trying to get the word out, and the weather's looking great, so we're super excited and really, we think we'll have the best ever. And we so appreciate the support of all of you, especially the crew at Bell, but really, you all have been great with us. We try to not leave a trace. On Sunday, Madeline and I are out there picking up pieces of paper off the Bell lights. It's a great, and here's Biscuit now, just say hi.
Hi, Biscuit.
Who's Biscuit?
I know, we all love Biscuit.
Who just said who's Biscuit?
Thank you for bringing Biscuit here this evening.
We'd love to get some photos with you all and Biscuit, if you don't mind. And we have, as always.
Thank you.
I think we need a picture of Biscuit.
Thank you.
Thank you, I will take one, thank you.
I don't have one yet, thank you.
I'm going to wave to Biscuit.
You put a picture on that flag, that looks great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, of course.
Somebody want a hug from Biscuit?
This is one of our students, you know.
This is, this is.
This is the painting you guys accepted.
It's beautiful.
I saw it in Martin's office, it looks great. Oh, my gosh!
All right, we're going to take a brief break to get a photo with Biscuit. Dawn, Madeline, thank you very much, and thank you, Biscuit.
Thank you. I am energized.
We really hope it's a terrific success. You do a fantastic job, so thank you all, on behalf of all of us.
And I would just like to say, thank you very much to the Chappaqua Central School District for allowing us to use your property for the festival.
Well, it's a terrific event for the community, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you. Who dares to follow that?
I know. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment this evening?
Hi, I'd love to.
Okay.
I have papers ready, but I know you can't take them, so I'm going to hand them over here.
Terrific, thank you.
I'm going to introduce myself. I'm the community member that spoke with Warren on the phone. My name is Debbie Jacobs. I've been a resident for 10 years, I have three children in the district. But before I start, first of all, thank you so much for the time, and I really appreciate it. I also love how comfortable this room is, and how hot it is out there, so it's nice to have this room now, but when you take a step outside, it supports, you know, some of my concerns. So basically, I'll be, you know, I'll be my three minutes quick. I've had this concern for quite some time, where I feel that, you know, we live in this amazing school district, and we want excellence for our children at school all the time, and many days and weeks, and now months, it is very hot. And so I put it out there to the community that I had some concerns about students' learning, teachers' teaching. I happen to be a special education teacher in New York City, but, you know, under circumstances of heat, you know, what happens? How frustrating it can be, because the kids come home, they don't feel well. Oftentimes, teachers are frustrated and they can't teach. I put it out to the community, and within two weeks, over 300 families were in agreement, and I know that, you know, it's a much bigger issue. I want to walk in here and say, hi, please give us air conditioning. Snap my finger, and boom, we have air conditioning, but it doesn't work like that. So what I wanted to say is that, because we're concerned about the health and the well-being and the education of our children, we would like to offer some suggestions and solutions to try and get, you know, a healthier air system for our classrooms. To do that, my first request would be to, if you could help us create a committee, a task force of some sort, which would include PTA members, teachers, parents, some of you to help us, to suggest, and of course, somebody in the financial department, a HPA expert, to come up with ways to suggest and help permanent and temporary solutions to this situation. However, we want it to be the most cost-effective, because we know that it's an expensive endeavor, but it benefits all of us. So that's, our first request is a task force. The second is, you know, some of the permanent solutions, of course, are air conditioning, whether it be wiring, maintenance, central air versus window units, individualized units in the classroom. And in the meantime, in the temporary situation that we're in, we would love some form of a cooling system, cooling stations such as this, a room where it's nice and cool, where students who are studying or having to take a test, or having, you know, regents or exams, you know, have a place to go where they can concentrate and feel healthy. In addition, a lot of people also actually suggested some fans, you know, and such. A lot of people also are interested in heat day action. Personally, as a working parent, I find that that's very hard, and I wish that that would be a thing I'd talk about. Okay, do I, one more minute? Have a second?
I'm willing to move that I would give her more time. I don't know how you do that, but I'm willing to listen.
Have to make a motion.
I move that we give the woman more time to speak.
Thank you so much.
We have traditionally, I believe, extended that time period for an additional minute. If you're asking for a minute, then, do you want to move to give her an additional minute?
Okay.
I'm willing to give her an additional three minutes. I don't, you know, as long as she needs.
Well, we do have our limitations that we say too, so we are trying to.
I'm allowed to talk for hours, but I won't seriously, I promise.
Do I have a motion to give her an additional minute to finish her?
Yes.
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, one more minute, absolutely.
Okay. So there's so much other information that some other, you know, community members will share with me, but one thing that's really important to consider is the models of our, you know, from the towns around us. Other, you know, when people are looking to move to school districts, the other towns that you're looking at, when you're looking to live in Chappaqua, you're looking to live in Scars, at Armok, at New Canaan, in other areas of Canada and such. And they are all working toward, whether it be with their bonds or what have you, putting in air conditioning. I know Scars will just put it in their bonds, and there's a movement. So there's, New York City just determined that in 2022, all New York City public schools will have air conditioning in each of their classrooms. So it's definitely something to consider, hopefully. And I think that's as far as I want to go for now. And then, you know, the next person who's going to speak is Christina Herman, she's took care of, she's an incredible person who I just recently met as a result of this. So friendships are made every day here in Chappaqua.
Thank you. Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the extra time.
Thank you.
I'm not a very loud speaker. Hi, I'm Christina Herman, I have two students in the system here over there. We just moved to Chappaqua about a year ago, and I saw Deb's post on Chappaqua Moms, and I just, it was one of my first impressions of joining Bell, which is a wonderful school. We love it here, but, you know, it started last September, and it was pretty hot, so it was definitely important to us. So I'm just jumping off after what Deb said, and I want to give a little reflection of what the community is saying sometimes, you know, I don't know, unfortunately, I don't know.
I know many of you, if you have kids in the system or what, so just, you know, a little soundboard of what the people and the families are seeing here. Just an example is, like, someone said on Facebook recently, "My little guy got very overheated and actually ended up vomiting from the heat at pickup, even with drinking lots of water." Another person says, "My son has asthma, and the extremely hot rooms affect him, and my wife is a teacher and shouldn't have to come home with headaches because of the extreme heat." And my daughter, anecdotally, she has asthma, so it's a big concern for me. And it's funny, but not a lot of people realize, when they say, it's like, oh, it's only a few days out of a week. It's like, well, kids that have asthma, who have diabetes, you know, teachers have low blood pressure, I have low blood pressure, I know I can't handle 90 degrees for a long time. And when I, in my other life, when I was working in Manhattan, like, there's no way I would have had a meeting in a conference room with 90-degree weather, they would just shut down that office. Another person said, "If our schools had no heat in the winter, they would close. Why doesn't the same apply for extreme heat?" And one other said, "Students can't learn under these conditions. Many experience headaches and feel sick, not to mention it's absurd to take finals and stifling classrooms." So just a few facts that, you know, a lot of us, and I'm sure you know as, you know, professionals in the education system, is that, you know, heat affects learning, and it's documented by the Mayo Clinic. And this is all in that packet with sources. But it's true that younger, the younger the child, the less developed their central nervous system is, and they're unable to tolerate higher temperatures and heat indices as compared to adults. And recently, in 2018, a research study from Harvard University proves that students would score lower on tests on very hot days and have a harder time learning overall. And here's a sample of some recorded temperatures in our schools in the first week of school of this year. Horace Greeley, Room J207, which I'm not familiar with the building, had 91 degrees. Roaring Brook had 93 degrees. Seven kids from class reported nausea and headache and went to the school nurse. Bell, which is where we are, has a broken-wall air conditioner on the fourth floor and has an average of the low 90s. Seven Bridges also in the 90s, and West Orchard is in the high 80s. So just to set a benchmark on standard, you know, workplace requirements, so OSHA, Occupational Health and Safety Administration recommends that schools be kept at a range of 68 to 76 Fahrenheit. And, yeah, oh, no. Okay, it's in, it's in the packet.
Could I move to give her?
She will get, if someone wants to move for an additional minute, and then we will take the packet and review it.
Oh, thank you.
So can I have a motion for?
I second.
Second, all in favor? All right, one more minute, then, thank you very much.
So pass. So you just, you know, I was talking about the working conditions. If we were in a professional office, someone from HR would probably say this is inhumane to have 90-degree weather in a conference room, so, you know, we would like the same for our teachers and our students and our youngest children. And finally, the last point is that climate change is real, and it's here. And so with each decade, so people say, when I was a kid, and when I was a kid, we didn't have air conditioning, but it's getting hotter, the heat waves are getting longer, and it's more of May and June and September. And NASA scientists believe that the heat waves are going to be growing in the Northeast, and the National Weather Service believes that heat index of over 90 degrees requires extreme caution, and we had a heat index of 93 the first week of school. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
You guys know that if we put air conditioning, you have no more excuses, right?
Does anyone else have a public comment?
You guys can do it.
Hi, I'm Sienna Jacobs. I go to sixth grade, and it gets really, really, really hot in Seven Bridges, and like, after, like, we go to recess, our lunchroom's air-conditioned. So after you step out of the lunchroom, you could just feel that it's burning hot, and then when you step into the classroom, it's even more hot than the hallways, so.
Thank you for speaking, we appreciate it.
My name is Bryce Jacobs. I'm in fourth grade, I go to West Orchard. So every time we go to recess, it's normally going to be really hot, but every time we're done and we come back inside, you get even hotter, because it's like, it's really hot, and it's really hard to concentrate, because every time we, like, half the people in my class, during work, they usually just move, they move where they're working, right under the fan, so, yeah.
Thank you for speaking. Would anyone else like to speak?
Yes.
Good afternoon, good evening. I'm Jessica Cattery, and I'm Chappaqua PTA president. I want to thank Lori Townsend for reminding me of this, because this was important. Want to say that we are very excited to recognize Custodians Appreciation Day on October 2nd. We want to thank the custodians who work so hard to keep our buildings clean, and we want to, if there is ever anything that the PTA can do to support and make their lives better, we want to do that, because they have been a wonderful part of our school community for both our children, for our families. And Joe Gromando leads the wonderful team, so, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jessica. Anyone else? Okay, we will move, head to the business portion of our meeting. Item three, approvals and ratifications. Item 3.1, I would like a motion to, these are the, to accept the minutes of August 30th, 2018 board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve 3.1?
I move 3.1.
Second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I have to stay. I wasn't here for that meeting, so I don't know if they're active.
Okay. So approved. Item 3.2, accepting the minutes of the September 12th, 2018 board meeting. Can I have a motion for 3.2?
I move 3.2.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Corrections? Anything?
Yes, and I apologize, I didn't send these in ahead of time. But I actually, the facilities committee report, rather than a committee meeting on September 13th, that was a facilities walk.
Can you point that out? I'm sorry.
It's in number two, committee reports.
Facilities committee meeting?
Yeah, it just wasn't a meeting, it was a facilities walk, so I just don't want to. So I just don't want someone to think they had missed a meeting.
Okay.
Right, that's true.
That's good, thank you very much. Anything else? Can we move, do we have to remove as amended, or just to approve as amended? All right, can we, all in favor of approving as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
I think we accepted it, we didn't approve it, but that's a legal thing.
Accept the.
Do we accept it as?
As amended.
Accept as amended. Accept item. And then we move to approve it? Accept it as amended?
No, no, you could just accept minutes of September 12th, 2018.
Oh, yes, okay, except that as approved, okay. Thank you, okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right, thank you, Lisa, for making that change.
I present 4.1 instructional as, recommend 4.1 instructional as presented. I will move item 4.1.
Second, anyone? I'll second, 4.1. Any discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye. So I would just, you would notice we have two tenured teachers on this agenda, and we'll be honoring them in June. Their tenure is just different based on the way their hiring took place, but we do a ceremony for all of our employees at the end of the year. So congratulate Megan and Pamela, but we'll do a more formal presentation with the rest of our tenured candidates at the end of the year.
Okay.
I present 4.2 non, I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I move we accept that recommendation.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, item 4.2 approved. We can move on to item 5, other recommended action. Item 5.1, I need a motion to approve the CSE summaries reported to the board on September 26th, 2018.
I move 5.1.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5.1 is approved. 5.2, the Board of Education wishes to approve the contract with Greg Duncan of Interprep for World Language Services. This is for consultation services during the 2018-2019 school year for the World Language Department in the amount of $3,100 per day. Can I have a motion on 5.2 to approve?
I move 5.2.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
And did we have a question answered as to how many, how many days?
We did, yes. We had asked whether that was an ongoing thing throughout the year, the cost, and Adam clarified that it was for two days, two full days of instruction at the high school.
Now we have them scheduled for two days, that's right.
Right, just that horse, Greeley, not at.
Yes.
Okay.
But that retainer allows us to stay at that rate if we choose to add additional sessions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All in favor of 5.2?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 5.2 is approved. 5.3, the Board of Education seeks to approve the agreement with Educational Management Services for Special Education Services for the 2018-2019 school year in the amount of $21,000. Can I have a motion to approve 5.3?
I'll move 5.3.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 5.3 is approved. 5.4, the Board of Education wishes to appoint Joseph Gromando as the district's asbestos management plan designee, duly certified, and this is in compliance with federal requirements for asbestos management in schools. Can I have a motion for 5.4?
I move item 5.4.
I second 5.4.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5.4 is approved. Facilities, this is to acknowledge, not accept, change orders that are made. Item 6.1, this is acknowledgement of a change order, which was approved by the superintendent for construction at Horace Greeley, and this was for labor equipment and materials related to asbestos abatement and disposal in the amount of $20,981.40. Can I have a motion for 6.1, acceptance of 6.1?
I move item 6.1.
I second 6.1.
All right, so we are acknowledging and accepting 6.1. Item 7.
Do we want to vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor, all in favor of 6.1.
So our voting took now, acknowledged.
We're, yes, I know we go through this every time. We are approving our acknowledgement of it, yes. I'm hoping, I'm hoping we can clear that up at some point, so.
One day, yeah.
All in favor of acknowledging 6.1, please say aye.
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 Thank you for your acknowledgement.
Yes, we have acknowledged 6.1. Item 7.1, this is an approval of the Treasurer's Report dated August 2018. May I have a motion to approve 7.1?
I move 7.1. I second.
Any discussion?